I'll order the City of Columbia City Council meeting on this September 3rd, 2024. I'll ask Deanne to give us the invocation and then we'll all rise and read the pledge, read the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Yeah?
Lord, we pray that you will give our council members the faith and courage to carry on their duties. Help them to do right, to deal fairly with others, and to place their trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deanne, may you call the roll?
Yankus?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the August 20th, 2024 City Council meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments regarding those minutes? There are none. They will be accepted as submitted. We have no readings of communications or reports of commissions and board. So I'll move to our recognition of persons desiring to appear. And we have Debbie Himes, President of the Historical Society of Columbia and Fairfield Township, to discuss the citizens of the cemetery, Chapter 3 event.
Before I begin, may I say a few words? Okay, to City Manager Lance Willard and Mayor Rick Noel and the council members. I know at one time we were known in the city as the hysterical society. And I like to think we are no longer that little, or that title when we visit City Hall. People come to council for many reasons. What I've seen the last two years, many times, is complaints and demands. That has not been the case with us at the Historical Society. On behalf of the society, we would like to say thank you. Council and Park Board has been very supportive of our projects and requests these past two years. The chapel's been a very good example. We knew you could not write a check. We were fortunate to have Mary Louise as our treasurer, and she knew how to get around a few things with the city. But we knew anything that could be done in-house would be handled by city departments, and they have been. We didn't ask for money to be placed in the cemetery budget for the building. Well, perhaps we thought so in the beginning. But the more we delved into the history behind the building, really, which was nothing more than a barn in 1890, it had no insights, we discovered a rich history in that chapel. The community needed to know about it. It became the goal of the Board of the Committee and a personal goal of Jay and myself to educate the public about the Stick Chapel in the Columbia Cemetery. The goals were simple and fixed: sticks. Educate, donate, and restore. We've done that very well as well. We've spoke to organizations, individuals, industry, business, and introduced fundraisers. Tim Reisch, on more than one occasion, researched and found grant applications for us. Unfortunately, we didn't, lost out in the money, but he did a straw. We are thankful for the help and input of members of the Park Board, particularly Tim, Nancy Turpak, and Greg Gustavson. Thank you for giving us free rein on the restoration of the chapel. The exterior is completely a historical preservation. That means that the wood that was even used to repair the bad spots, the missing non-existent spots, were from a small interior wall that was built at the same time in 1890. The interior, well, there never was an interior. It was a dirt floor and just basically a barn. Anyways, so we're replicating the backside of the walls and the roof. I thank you. Okay, I thought when we did that, I went to the, had Tim do the council or the Park Board, and that we filled out that permit that was rather lengthy, I want to say, but thorough. I didn't think I'd have to come, so I was surprised when Rick Becca called and said, "You have to come." We're requesting the citizens of Columbia Cemetery, Chapter 3, for October 25th from 4:00 to 8:30 p.m. It will be at Columbia Cemetery and Birdfish. The hayrides depart at 4:00 p.m. and last one at 7:45. The citizens are excused at 8:30. We will use lighted luminaries at the intersections, and we have solar spotlights this year to mark the speakers. I do need permission to have a porta potty in the park, in the cemetery, if that's okay, because, you know, they don't come from Birdfish dry. I asked the Park Avenue and Friends Street entrances be closed to traffic that evening. We will have a run-through October 24th of 2024. The hayrides are provided by Catalpa Grove Farm. The liability insurance has been donated by Craig Mercer family. Birdfish will handle our ticket sales again. All gross proceeds are donated. There are no costs associated with this fundraiser. Ten citizens plus a chapel speaker. And we'll have lights in the chapel this year, so it'll be nice. Lined up so far is an abolitionist, an attorney, an industrialist, a farmer, police chief, a Firestone family member, a veteran, and the first village manager. So, do we have your permission to proceed? Okay, now, do you want to move on to the update on the chapel? Because I have that too.
And we will.
You'll vote on it. You'll give me my yes. Thank you. All right. You're lucky I'm with the township.
Do you want to stand here while we vote?
Oh, no.
You can stand there. Go ahead. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve as submitted.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second. Any discussion on the motion? Deanne, may you call the roll?
Yankus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
You're approved.
Thank you.
It's official, and you can go ahead.
Okay, the update in regards to, I thought Jay was coming to give you this. As I said, there was never an interior to this building, and we couldn't see repairing the building and it not being able to be used. One, the electrical was installed, the box, junction box, by Graff Electric. David Spatholder and Jay Groner provided the electric. What I want you to know, because I'm going to educate, is David Spathold's wife, Virginia Harold's third great-grandfather, he was one of the builders of the Stick Chapel. So, I knew you'd like that. Okay, plus he was mayor at one time, too, right? Anyways, Boken Sons, the interior, will do the interior insulation. Tim has applied for occupancy permits. Since we're doing an interior, we're kind of backtracking a little bit here, but it's necessary. So there will be inspections. The electrical inspection, I believe, was to happen this morning. I'm not sure if it did, but they were there for the, they hadn't been there early in the morning. We're going, the finishing of window frames and new sills, that's been undertaken. And six of the windows are done today, and the other four should be done in the next few days. Then the walls begin shortly. The lumber is beautiful, as I said. WW Heating and Air Conditioning have donated the mini split and the labor, so we're free there. The occupancy permit and inspections are in order. The money, I want to tell you, the check is in the mail. And it truly is. We received from Jay's and Maya's classmate 20 shares of Home Depot stock. So we had to find a broker. We had, we, it took like six weeks, but $7,156.51 will complete it later this week. So the project should be not completed for September 16th, where I wanted it to be, but it'll be later this fall. I was hoping it'd be done so I could bury Tom, but we'll wait a little bit longer.
Okay, good luck to you.
I don't recall anybody else complaining to us, but we do appreciate how great you guys are with the Historical Association, and we appreciate our working with you. And we are blessed to have you and Jay particularly heavily involved in dealing with our history, which is very interesting. So, thank you very much. Okay, next we have the manager report, so I'll turn it over to Lance.
I get to follow Debbie.
Yeah. It's a hard act to follow.
Okay, just give you an update on a couple of projects. As I said last meeting, the Kane Sidewalk project is going well. It's pretty much done, except for the final bridge to be delivered and installed. Fairfield School Road, space codes down. Crews have moved on to Lisbon Street, and the project should wrap up by the end of September. Because we were doing some work on Lisbon Street, and we had a valve that we knew that needed upgraded, the water distribution crews worked on that, and a lot of you saw that planned outage and temporary boiling order last week, I believe it was. And it's, you know, we do appreciate the residents in the area with their patience, and, you know, they did a great job getting it back on, and it's, you know, everything's back to normal now. Let's see, we did advertise for the bids for Crestview Raw Water Line, so we'll be bringing those back to you. We will be advertising for the Statement of Qualifications for upcoming ODOT project. Thought we were going to have it out last week, but we did not get it. We'll get it out this week, I think. On your desk today was a little flyer from Drug Mart. They're going to be doing their ribbon cutting on September 11th. And they're also going to be doing a 9/11 ceremony at 9:00 in the morning. And Bryce has been working with the Legion. Hopefully, the color guard can be out there that day for that ceremony, so it'll be good. But that flyer is in your packet. If you saw in the cemetery Board Meeting Minutes, we did do a rate study for the, doing burials. Tim did a study, and we're planning on bringing legislation to adopt at the next meeting. The rates have gone up, and you'll have all that information in your next packet. Bryce and I attended the Youngstown Warren Chamber breakfast last week, where they honored businesses. And it was exciting to see that Melissa Poland of Sweet Melissa's received the Small Business Professional of the Year award, so that was really cool. Got to see her down there and got to talk to her. And I guess they're going to expand, so they're going to have a third location. But she's done a great job down here. She's the one that runs the, you know, Sweet Melissa's down here. So, very, very proud of her and happy that they honored her. So I'll give you just a kind of a flashback, just bring you up to speed. On, in November of 2021, Josh Lindhart of Firestone Avenue requested a vacation of alley near his property to Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted to move forward. It is quite a process. They kind of put it on hold for a while. But they did, they did end up filing a petition to vacate the alley. It's only going to affect a few, a few property owners, and eight parcels, so it's not like the entire thing. But we're going to be bringing it to council probably next meeting. We're going to get that together, and we'll have it all written out and show you where it's at for the decision to approve or disprove that. Now, if you recall, there were some utilities there, the electric, I believe, water, and maybe sewer. We'll maintain all that utility easements for that, so just wanted to point that out to everybody. But I did want to let you know that, you know, after a few years, that, you know, it's back, it's going to be back on the docket, so. We were made, since the last meeting, we were made aware of potential grant from T-Mobile for stadium improvements, which was kind of cool. Work quickly, Bryce wrote an application to help, help the school submit that application. Has actually met with representatives there, and I believe we're going to be turning it in soon. It's highly competitive, and it will need the community support. And we're going to try to come up with a plan to roll that out once it's finalized. A lot of it's going to be posting on Instagram, so we're going to try to create some, like, marketing campaign to do that, probably at the home football games. So we're going to try to do that during probably halftime and have people share that. So, going to get the whole, whole community behind that, kind of like we did with the Reader's Digest contest. We're a little, little community, but we vote big, as you remember. We did pretty well, so. So as that comes along, we will be rolling that out and getting that out to you. Election season's coming up, if anybody didn't know that. There, we wanted to kind of review some bullet points on signage. So specifically, I really wanted to concentrate on residential signage tonight. The temporary, Class A temporary signs that, kind of like corrugated plastic that you'd put up for election season typically, those are called Class A temporary signs. You're allowed eight of those in a residential 60 days prior to the election, and they're maximum of 12 square feet. And then, and then the other one is, you know, they, they need to be, you know, they can't be in the public, public land. They have to be off the right of way. A typical, good rule of thumb is behind the sidewalks and behind the utility poles. And then those signs that are unattended, which are signs that are in public right of way, or attached to utility poles, which is a big no-no, are considered abandoned and will be destroyed, so we'll have to take those down. But just as we're gearing up, we've, you know, thought it would be a nice announcement to kind of remind everybody. If you're putting those, somebody asks to put a sign in your yard, just ask them to put it behind the utility pole or the sidewalk, and you typically should be pretty safe with that, so. You know, again, we don't, you know, there's not a lot, lot we do with the signs. We, as far as in regards to regulating them, you know, it's not the content that we control. Or, you know, it's usually, we're looking at the size, time, and placement of those signs. So that's what we adopted. I think we updated our sign ordinance a few years ago. Yeah, we were really required to do that, I believe, by the state, right? I think the state or...
There's been a lot of cases over the last few years on signage, the content of signs, and, you know, this gets into scenarios of the consultation that are pretty interesting, but it's all freedom of speech.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to electric department. They installed and finished heating up the cul-de-sac at Arrowhead Park. We are working on street fair preparation. I can't believe that's what's happening. That's tomorrow, right? So it's a street fair. It always feels like it's street fair, but if you recall, we talked to Jake Savak last. I think we're going to close down the street tomorrow, and can't believe it's here. It's already. Let's see, we fixed a bad underground secondary. Moving on to the pool and cemetery, pool's officially closed for 2024 season. Staff has begun winterizing the facility. Moving on, we're looking at, working on replacing the roof at the Twin Oaks Pavilion. And we're doing the usual maintenance of the park, cemetery, mowing, weeding, and burials. Water Department, they did the dig locates and work orders. They finished all the critical transmission valve exercising again this year, so something that's required, and they methodically go through it. And, you know, it's been, going to be a pretty busy year for, for our utility departments with, you know, the constructions that we're doing. So, kind of like that water valve that just popped up last week, that, you know, we're doing that. So, it kind of pushed the level of importance up for that valve to get that done. So, these, even though we're doing a, you know, a street improvement project, that, you know, sometimes it impacts the different utilities. So you have to, have to plan on that, and I appreciate them working on those valves and getting ahead of it, so we're not doing it in December. We got them done for the year. They did finish creating a west valve exercising program, including location maps and routes to turn the valves in the most efficient manner, so it's kind of a prescriptive method on, for those to come in the future. They replaced a broken four-inch valve on Lisbon Street, so that was a four-inch, the one that I've been mentioning. Street Department replaced 120-foot storm line. They picked up 11 loads of brush. Repaired, replaced street signs. They paved 32 tons of road in the park stadium renovation. So if you're, if you're at the Meere Lake, there's that section between the parking lot and the sidewalk there is where we put down 32 tons of blacktop. And that's, that's something we've always maintained. Waste water department, we did have a new hire, so we're excited about that. They did, did some sewer jetting on Firestone, Main, and Lakeview. And I believe that is everything there.
Thank you. Questions for Lance? Okay. You all received a copy of the bill list for September 3rd, 2024. Any questions on the bill list? There are none. We'll move to old business, of which we have none. So we'll move past old business and move to new business. And I will entertain motion to set Trick or Treat Night in the City of Columbia for Thursday, October 31st, 2024, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments?
You know, I read on the internet, so I know it must be true, that for the first time in 666 years, Halloween is on Friday the 13th this year.
Really?
Yeah.
666. My speech is dyslexic.
I, it was on the internet, so it must be true. Thank you.
Any other sterling comments? Yeah, one's a list. Okay, hearing on DM, may you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yankus?
Yes.
Okay, this is very much different from our last meeting, as far as time goes. But I want to let everyone know that I am going to request motions to go into executive sessions here in a minute. There will not be any action taken after these executive sessions. So, as is our way of doing business here, we always want to have the opportunity to allow the public to speak, and people make comments. So at this time, I'm going to adjust our agenda, so that I'd ask now if anyone out there has anything that you would like to say, this is your opportunity. You want to come forward? Move to the mic. Now, your name, please?
My name is Frank Belosik, and I've lived in Columbia for 26 years, and it's a great community. We love it better every day. I know it's getting big, but the problem we're having over there in the Arrowhead, you know, where the car wash is and Dollar General there, and you come in, that's Windjammer. And we keep saying that we need a stop sign there, because when they shoot around to Bayshore, the cars are flying. I mean, not all of them, but a lot of these young kids and different individuals are flying around that street, and our mailboxes are on the other side of, I live at 282, by the way. So our mailboxes are across the street. You know, getting to be my age, it's like, you really got to watch yourself. And I actually put a fence in the corner of my front yard, because I've had people drive on my yard. You know the area. I know Mark knows the area. And the two stops just, we needed at the third when they come around the bend, because a lot of them just shoot around the bend and come down our street without, you know, they don't have to stop, because there's no stop sign. Well, there's a stop sign on Windjammer, and there's a stop sign on Bayshore, but these cars fly. Am I right?
They do sometimes.
Yeah, it is, and it's, and we would love to be able to get a stop sign, so that we have a three-way stop. And it makes it better for everybody, because people aren't flying around there. Now, the two stops are good, and they just put the last open, I can't, how many years ago? Maybe five, six? Something like that, and that did help. But the worst part is the cars coming in. It's just awful, and they fly around that bend. And that's not everybody, of course. And a second thing I would like to say is, all the property on 14 there, you know, they're going to have all kind of businesses there. Wendy's is the example now. And the thing is with that, the neighbors have to look at, like the people across the street on Bayshore, have to look at all those properties and all the cars coming in the driveway and different things like that. It exposed the whole area, especially for Dawn, because his house is the first one across the street. And I think that if people would buy there, that there should be restrictions, that they have to do something to barrier the houses from the commercials, buildings there. I mean, that should possibly be in, in the contract when they buy, that they should have a barrier. Trees, whatever, hines, fence, and I don't live on that side of the street, so it's not affecting me. But I feel sorry for the people that do live there, because they have to deal with that. And that was, that was the other thing we decided to, at least I decided to come here. And I know Mark lives on the back, so he knows a lot of this is true. And I wouldn't want to live in a house on that side of the street because of all the commercial buildings being there. It's unfair to the people, you know, and these are neighbors that have been there for years, and we love the community. We love the people. We love everything about Columbia. For the first three years, when we moved down there, every day we would come home, I'd say to my wife, I said, "Son, I love it here." She said, "So do I." And then after a while, she said, "You sound like a broken record." And then after a while, she said, you sound like a broken record. Saying the same thing, but we do. We love the community. We love everything about it. It's, it's just the greatest community. And I thank yous all. And, uh, looking forward to hearing some, oh, and I have to say Bob Bryce. I called him today and he was wonderful. He was very good about the whole situation and seeing, you know, what he could do it, do about it. And, uh, so I thank you all. So. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Question. It's in regard to Lisbon Street. You're doing that and I understand hopefully diverting a lot of water from the underpass. You know, I'm on the other side of that underpass. Is that going to be paved too?
The pavement is gonna go underneath the underpass. We're probably gonna stop shortly thereafter.
Just like you have before.
Yeah.
I would just like to say thank you for your kind words about the city. We appreciate that. And, uh, I'm sure that, you know, this is why we let people come and speak. Anybody can speak here. And I think you'll probably be working with Bryce, I hope. That's what we're gonna assume up here, that he'll be working, you'll be working with these gentlemen on these issues. And we'll definitely try to respond to those. So thank you very much.
But do you remember in, in planning commission, did we, uh, tell them that we want something light barrier on that? Usually we do.
I know. I, I was a little surprised about that too.
I thought there was some, uh, this is Wendy's retirement, because I thought you did too.
Yeah.
But there's also requirements for physical barriers when, I mean, it could, it varies, I guess, depending on where residential bumps up to commercial. So I don't know. Looks like Lance has an answer. Well, I mean, the property is a little different, right? I mean, you're coming off of Route fourteen. And if you were gonna put a fence back there, I don't, I mean, we can try to calculate how tall that fence would have to be to intercept it from your light, from your, from your front window. Be a little difficult because if, if everything drops off to the north, right? And then you come, you know, tree lined, that's, yeah, an eight, eight-foot fence would not do it. So this is.
A six-foot fence.
Well, in a commercial, you can, you can do more than that, but like I said, I mean, and he just inferred that, I mean, I've never spoke to him about it, but it's, um, it's gonna take more like twelve, twelve feet, it looks like to me. I was wondering if, you know, all the zoning requirements, assuming that they work, Wendy's is really new, so. Yeah, because it's the headlights that's coming off the car. Ah, so you're up on Route fourteen and then they turn. Once they get down in the parking lot, those lights don't get there, you know, I, I don't think so. Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
One more thing, at least, thanks a lot.
Come on up here because we, we're on Zoom.
People listening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, when you come in on Windjammer and when you're turning right to go below on Windjammer where Mark lives, um, it's just a, a thought. Is it possible they could put a fence on the side of the Bellaria Restaurant that's a bar too? To make it, you know, do you know anything about that, Mark? Or you've heard about?
I think we have looked at, you know, where does the right of way and where does the Plaza property begin? Lance and I have talked about that, I don't think Bryce and I have, but we have talked about if somebody wanted to put any type of barrier up, whose property is it on? Is it on the right of way or is it actually gonna be back on the owner of?
I think it should be on the owner because they could pull up and they could see when, when there's, when they pull up by Bellaria there, they could actually see up and down the road. It would be enough for a car to see both ways and have no problems. Does it sound? Yeah. And that, and that, not only that, would, it would be great for everybody because it would block the commercial buildings from the residential people. It's a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Take that under consideration as you talk with Bryce. Any other comments out there? And I'm gonna turn to, do any here on council have any comments tonight?
Yes. This is something that hasn't been said for a long time, uh, but I think it needs to be said. Uh, I want to thank council. It's a great group of people, uh, with a common interest, which is called the City of Columbiana. And we've worked very hard to make that happen and to keep things clean and pure. And I just want to say congratulations on a good job. I'm really, I'm really appreciative of this council.
Thank you, Mr. President of council. Any other comments?
Yeah, I want to ask about, um, since we're on stop signs, we talked a couple of years ago about St. Andrews and Homestead, right in front of the, um, when they come up Homestead and if you made the left coming up from the backside, there's, I think I talked to Jesse about it, actually.
Yeah, the HOA just reached out to us again about two weeks ago.
Oh, did?
We're doing a little study. Bryce is working on it with House of Bear.
Since you brought up stop sign, we're looking at stop signs, we might as well throw that into the mix.
We're getting good at those.
And a, and a speed limit, right?
Yeah.
Another comment.
I have a question, Eric. How we north downstream? Has anybody thought about closing down off again like we have last two years?
We got any requests? Because that's one of my John, it's our question.
That was, yeah, it was not a request of the
the neighborhood.
You think it's the, the right thing to do?
I do. I think it's worked out great the last two years.
Maybe we should just do it and that we should, we should just do it.
Yeah, that's pretty heavy, pretty heavy areas for there that night.
It's crazy.
Hey, how do, how do we make that happen? Do you motion it?
Probably need a motion to do that. I'll make the motion to close North Elm Street from, what did we do? Prospect?
Prospect, Salem.
To Salem. The, during the hours of Halloween.
I'll second.
Second. Hey, rep a motion in a second.
Do we just want to do five to seven or do you want to close it a little bit earlier to? You, you could give me permission to. You want to change your motion? Ask the, the neighbors that are doing it, right? Is that how they did it in last, or no? Well, if, if we're the ones doing it, I mean, they, they could certainly ask for different hours or whatever, but so, do you guys want to change your motion to give Lance permission to stop the hour?
Well, let's, let's change the motion to at your discretion. Want to close, close it.
Okay, with a second?
Yes.
Okay. Deanna, you call the roll?
Tilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes. Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, I have one. Um, I just want to say that, uh, one of the things I want to say about the Historical Society and Debbie is, um, as you know, we discussed at our last meeting that this is the fiftieth year of the charter, um, being in place in Columbiana. And, um, so we, um, to me, it's an important, significant document in the history of Columbiana. It's made major impact. Only Columbiana and East Palestine have, uh, charter forms of government in Columbian County. We think it's served us very well over the years, uh, highlighted by the fact that we've only had three city managers since nineteen seventy-four. And, uh, we, so we've had the stability of the Pittsburgh Steelers, um, basically.
Better success rate.
Yeah, we have better, we can talk about that. Um, but, um, we are talking about having some sort of recognition of that fiftieth year, fifty years of having it. And especially, uh, Debbie worked, I went to the Historical Society office and she prepared this excellent list here for me of the fifteen original members who, the commission which was established to create the, the charter back in, they started in nineteen seventy-one. And, um, we have this list and we would like to explore the possibility of having some special recognition this year to recognize those folks. Two of those, uh, individuals are still alive and, uh, still with us, which is great. And, uh, Debbie's done some great research here to identify, I'm counting maybe nine or ten children that live, uh, you know, uh, children of the, the family members who were on the charter commission. And, uh, I'm sure they would, it'd be a great honor to recognize them and the work that that original group did. And, um, so, uh, I just want to make that point. And if anybody has a good idea about, well, we're discussing ways that we might want to conduct that uh, fiftieth year celebration and we hope to do it before the end of the year. So if anybody has any ideas, I'd love to hear them. And we can start working on that. I'll be working with Debbie at the, the Historical Society and, uh, trying to develop some plans, but, uh, that was my primary comment. And, you know, we're having the, we've had the Charter Review Commission. It's five year, every five years, the charter has to be reviewed. And last meeting, the council appointed uh, members to that commission and we're gonna start doing the review here very shortly. So, uh, we're keeping alive the charter. And I think that's very important to all of us. So anyway, just, that's my comment. Are there any other comments?
Rick, just one question on the Charter Review Committee. Um, if someone were to have a suggestion or a question, where would they direct those, um, inputs about various?
Well, there are two things I'd like to answer. First of all, all of our Charter Review Commission meetings will be held publicly. So first and foremost, they could come to a meeting and say, here's a suggestion that I have to review the charter. And, um, the second way I think would be to write a letter and if you want to send it to me since it's my responsibility as mayor under the charter to convene these meetings, I'd be happy to receive correspondence. Uh, if anything anybody would like to suggest. Uh, the charter is on, on the internet, W W W A M Legal. And you can look up the charter if you want to look at the charter. It's online if you want to see it. And, um, and take a look at it and see what you think of it. So.
And will those meeting dates be posted on our website? Or will the meeting dates that you have, open, okay.
We will post on the website. We will announce them, you know. Uh, our representative is here from the Morning Journal. I'm sure we'll coordinate with them on our publicity as soon as we get it. Hope to get that date of the meeting this week. We're hoping to tie that down this week, have our first meeting.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session with the discussion of personnel, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G one, to consider the compensation of certain public employees.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Deanna, you call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Vitilio?
Yes.
I would also like at this time to, uh, entertain a motion to go into executive session for the person, purpose of discussion of purchase of property, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G two, for public purposes. If premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion is second. Deanna, you call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Vitilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd entertain, oh, you're okay. I'd entertain a motion to come out of executive session for the discussion of personnel, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G one, to consider the compensation of certain public employees.
Move.
Second.
Motion is second. Deanna, you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Vitilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to come out of executive session for the purpose of discussion of purchase of property, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G two, for public purposes. If premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion is second. Deanna, you call the roll?
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Vitilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.